We would invite all who care to stand and join us in a recitation of the Lord's Prayer, followed by a moment of silence. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come; thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and the power, and the glory forever. Amen. It's now seven o'clock. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance, shall we say to the council meeting, it's called to order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The seated, please. Roll call, please, Mr. Crum.
Mr. Robb.
Here.
Mr. Roberts.
Here.
Mr. Gates.
Here.
Mr. Martin.
Present.
Mr. McGlock.
Here.
I'm not entertaining a motion to dispense with the reading of the Journal from June 7, 2021. Salute.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin, and a second by Mr. Roberts, to dispense with the reading of the Journal from June 7, 2021. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Robb.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
Yea.
Mr. Gates.
Yea.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Mr. McGlock.
Yea.
That motion passes. Now comes the time for public comment. If anyone has a comment they would like to make before council this evening, come to the podium, state your name and address, and make your comment. Or if you'd like to reserve a time for some legislation that will be on the agenda later on, you can come forward now and reserve that time to speak to that piece or pieces of legislation.
Hi, my name is Jeff Schuler. I live at 3065 East Smiley Road. This is my wife, Michelle. I believe that we are on the docket tonight, trying to annex into the city. And we had some issues with the mail that, of course, and kind of Joe, I think, kind of pulled a few strings and got something done, of course. Our lawyer mailed our petition, and it took 16 days to give from Mansfield to Shelby. So I appreciate Joe doing that, and I appreciate all of you doing whatever it is you did to make this happen. So we're looking forward to this process. It hasn't been, it's not been the weakest spirit, that's for sure, I can tell you. But, too, this has been quite a learning process, so I know we have quite a bit to go. So I thank you for your time.
You want to reserve some time when we come to those peaceful legislation, if council does take those up, or to speak to any questions?
Sure, if you have questions, I suppose. I don't know if I should learn.
In that regard, yeah.
Oh, okay.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
Any further comments? I hear none. We move forward to reports from standing and special committees. The Finance and Personnel Committee met last Thursday. Councilman Gates.
Mayor, thank you. Yes, indeed, we met last Thursday. The financial statement as of May 31st is in the packets. We're going to hit some of the high points of that. And we're going to begin at the last page that shows the city income tax collections for the first five months of the year. We look at the top, that the numbers are for year-to-date, and you can see that income tax collections year-to-date as of the end of May were $2.2 million. And compared to the three-year average, that number is up 26% over the three-year average. That is, you could think of any kind of superlatives to put there. Spectacular, unexpected is probably understated, but it is what it is. If you look at previous years, you can see where we got over $2 million. And generally, that was in July. Three years recorded there, it was in July, one year it was in June. So, you know, hitting that target so early in the year is also significant. If we look down at the bottom, where we see just the monthly amounts, we collected $558,000 in city income tax in May, and it was up 24% over the three-year average. So, you know, the finance director has no explanation for it. Not to put words in his mouth, but, you know, it's certainly not what we expected. We're certainly happy to have it, don't get me wrong, but, you know, certainly very good news there. If we look at the second page at the bottom, here we can see the breakdown of individual business and withholding. The, of course, individuals and businesses are paying income tax based upon their previous year. So this would be income that was earned in 2020. Individual is up 36%. Business is up 192%, so double what it was. Excuse me, that'd be almost triple, I'm sorry, almost triple over the three-year average. And withholding, which is on this year's income, is up 8%. And I believe that overall, the prediction was for 7% less this year than last year. So now, there's a lot of the year yet to go, you know, I understand that. But, you know, for the first five months, the income tax collection is just doing unbelievably. So let's go to the front page, and we'll work down through it. Just very quickly, five months is 42% of the year. If you look down at the bottom, we collected 36% of the revenues and made 33% of the expenditures. So that's, you know, that's quick and dirty. You know, there's dozens of funds there, we need to look at those and, you know, make individual judgments. General funds doing very well. Started at $1.3 million. We've got cash at the end of May, $1.6 million, so, you know, we're up over $300,000 there. The street fund, of course, this is there, you know, things are getting busy in the street fund. A balance of $60,000 there. The cash balance is down some, not a lot. Park and the health funds are both doing very well. Of course, a lot of that is because of the second half real estate collections, which is their big chunks of money. So we'll see the cash balance start to go down, but nothing there to worry about. The COVID relief fund, number 283, we have $16,000 free and clear. We need to think about spending that. That money needs to be expended, I believe, by the end of this year. So, you know, that's, I'm sure, a target that the administration has. Capital improvement, yeah, this is the busy time when things are, you know, projects that were held off until we could adopt the permanent appropriations measure, and now purchase orders are being issued. $172,000 in cash, $144,000 free and clear. Streets, alleys, catch basins. Of course, you see a big reserve there for encumbrances of $409,000. That's our resurfacing, and that's no surprise there. We get down to line Fund 400, sewer. This is where we've had some concerns. We have two pieces of legislation that are going to address that this evening. You can see the situation there. Started out with $213,000 in cash, we're down to $152,000 in cash. So we've lost $61,000 in cash this year where expenditures have exceeded revenues. Water, water is doing better. Again, the amount of cash is up $48,000 for the year. The electric fund, down $7,000, but if that's, you know, with the cash of $5.8 billion, $7,000 is a significant amount of money, but when you compare it to the big picture, it's almost chump change. Lastly, hospitalization. We can see that there's $650,000 there. It's up $31,000 over the year. Again, we are continuing to monitor that, and hopefully, we can have some months later in the year where we can forego transfers from the variance funds where employees are received healthcare benefits, and that will be a savings to those funds. Looking at the next page. Again, right in the middle, we can see expenditures for wages. That's up 7%. That's the effects of retirement there. Going on to the next page, where we see the comparison of utilities at the top. Again, we can see wastewater, water, and electric, the comparison of revenues and expenditures, and there we can see that $61,000 decrease in the sewer fund. Down at the bottom of that page, see the five transfers from the, from income tax, the 220 fund, to the general capital improvements and other funds. We may have to do supplementals there because the revenue is so great into the income tax fund that there then will be greater transfers into these funds. So, you know, as a general rule, you know, we like to avoid supplemental appropriations, but here would be a good time to have one, when revenue has exceeded our expectations. The next page is the cash investment reconciliation statement. We can see at the bottom, the amount in the city treasury as of the end of May, And that's included in investments and checking accounts. The finance department is considering a reformatting of this page. I'll try to explain, at least how I understand it. If you look up at the top in the investments, we see the general account, and then we see four incidences of treasury bonds, Shelby School District Bonds, Licking Heights School Bonds. And those are in PNC Bank. My understanding, and the finance director, please correct me if I'm wrong, we don't own those investments. The PNC has invested in those on our behalf. Is that a correct summary?
That's sure, yeah.
Okay. So, you know, they have it, but our name is on it. Very different than if someone goes and buys a U.S. savings bond. You go buy it, and when it comes, your name is on it. It's not quite how it works here. So anyways, we'll see a reformatting of this page that hopefully will be easier to understand. The next little page is the Soderhousch. You know, it is what it is. It's those public monies that are answerable to the probate court and not to the city council in a strange way. Mayor, kind of in a nutshell, that's my report. Obviously, if the finance director has anything he wishes to add, I wish that he would.
It does well set, sir.
Mayor, I move that the combined financial statement and the cash investment reconciliation statement, both dated May 31st of 2021, be received, placed on file, and posted to the city's website.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates, and a second by Mr. Martin, that the combined financial statement and the cash investment reconciliation statements, both dated on 5/31/2021, be received, placed on file, and posted to the city website. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Robb.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
Yea.
Mr. Gates.
Yea.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Mr. McGlock.
Yea.
That motion passes.
Mayor, there was some other business that we had. We talked past couple months about the different insurances that the city has and possibly bringing that out. Mr. Crum is going to make a phone call about that. I don't know if he has anything to add to that.
Yeah, we have to. I spent about an hour in a meeting with an insurance audit firm in close to Chicago that we actually used the city perhaps 15 years ago. Essentially, you know, it's been a while since we kind of reviewed our insurance policy with a third party. And what this organization does is, they go through everything in the city, and they look at your policy, and they say, okay, this is what you're, you know, you get too much coverage on, this is what you don't have enough coverage on. And they put a package together that essentially gives you the bid specs. So that way, if you put it up in bid, then all the insurance companies have to meet these specs, so you're looking at apples and apples, because it's particularly the insurance world. You know, your premium can change a lot based on how much an agent feels that you should be covered in one aspect or another. So I'm going to give them some of our background information, and then they'll kind of look it over, give us a real brief of, okay, this might be worth looking into, and then give us a vote on that. I'll bring that up with finance committee when we meet next, and we can decide what to do from there.
Mr. Gates.
Piece of unfinished business, what is the credit card? I had asked about that. The city now has a credit card. It is a Visa card through Park National Bank with no fees. It has a cash, it has a limit of, hold on your hats, of $5,000. And at present, only the finance director is authorized to use it. So if any department would need its use, I think particularly the fire department in applying for our pharmaceutical licenses, where the state of Ohio won't honor our purchase order. And in the past, the chief has put that on his personal credit card. And likewise, when city employees have gone to conferences and to reserve a hotel room, have had to put that on personal credit cards. You know, when we've got, you know, we're a $36 million operation a year, it seems to me that a credit card is justified. Obviously, my colleagues believe so because we passed legislation authorization. The mayor and the personnel, you had mentioned that a officer in the police department has tendered his resignation effective July 11th. That will start, of course, the process for replacement there. There has been a conditional offer made to a potential officer in the department, and as of last Thursday, you said that the city was awaiting testing components to be completed, so. And in the fire department, there are two interviews scheduled, actually, they were scheduled for today, this morning. So that process is moving along, and I expect that's one opening that's in the department that is for Mike Paolo, who retired back in April. So, Mayor, that concludes my report from the Finance and Personnel Committee. I would be happy to attempt to answer anyone's questions.
Mr. Gates. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Gates in regard to his thorough report? I hear you done. Thank you again. We'll move forward. Utilities and Streets Committee did not meet, so there will be no reports this evening. To reports of city officials, I have no official report. This evening, the last two weeks, I've flown by, as usual. Most of you have received my memo that I will be out of the office till about 2:00. So Mr. Eisner will be in the position of acting mayor. So, I hope everyone looks the same way. But so that's all for me tonight. Do you have any questions for me? Moving forward then to Mr. Brian Crum, our Director of Finance.
Thank you, sir. I also don't really have a lot of a report this evening. Councilman Gates already covered all of the fund bean counter stuff and the insurance audit. So we can just move along unless anybody has anything for me this evening.
Are there any questions for Mr. Crum or comments? Right, we're moving forward then to Mr. Eisner, law director.
Thank you, Mayor. Chaos in my office currently, but Maria's procedures went well. She'll be out at least another week, but it sounds like with the best possible, new, possible gift for her. So hopefully, another week, we get her back with limited capabilities. A big thank you to Stacy at City Hall for getting some legislation hands here for tonight in Maria's absence. I was able to do a couple hours of the research on your McFarley ballpark issue that will be ready the next council meeting. It's not ready tonight, but we're dangerous, so close. Other than that, all business as usual.
Thank you. Are there any comments or questions for Mr. Eisner in regard to his report? Move forward. Mr. Gates is out of town this evening. Look forward to his next report next meeting. We move to new business. Application for amendment to the city zoning code for Gerald E. and Deborah L. Schumacher. And Mr. Sheen.
Mayor, I move that the application be referred to the Planning Commission for its review and report.
Second. All right, we have a motion by Mr. Gates, and a second by Mr. Martin, that the application for the amendment to the city zoning code be referred to the Planning Commission for review and report. End of discussion. Mr. Gates.
Mayor, for the record, this property fronts both on Mansfield Avenue at Werram Road and also has frontage on George Park Road. It's currently zoned R1A. The petitioners wish to rezone a portion of the property to I-1.
Thank you. Further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Robb.
Yea.
Mr. Roberts.
Yea.
Mr. Gates.
Yea.
Mr. Martin.
Yea.
Mr. McGlock.
Yea.
That motion to refer passes. Thank you. Moving forward then to unfinished business. Future use needs to be fired station, I've had no movement on that. Charter of Centennial Timeline, Mr. Gates.
Mayor, there's nothing to report.
The Bryant Park Baseball Field, we have a report from Mr. Eisner that we should be getting a detailed opinion on that here next meeting. I think it goes well. Health Department and the state budget, as I understand, things have gone to conference between the House and the Senate, so we shall see, but we shall see. All of our views have been made known very plain to Representative John and Senator Romancheck. And so we will hope for the very best for that legislation or act of that budget to have language that we can live with. All right? Anything else under unfinished business? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, it's, you know, a year rolls by, and it has long been my custom, my practice at the council meeting preceding Independence Day, to read the Declaration of Independence. You know, it's two weeks off, you know, it's a long ways off, so. But coming so soon after Juneteenth, it has a certain meaning there as well. And just as a sidebar, as I was getting ready, cleaned up for council, I'm thinking, what tie should I wear? Well, of course, I pulled out my tie, which has the signatures of the ciders of the Declaration, and there's Mr. Jefferson down at the bottom. So, "In Congress, July 4th, 1776, a declaration by the representatives of the United States of America, and general Congress assembles. When in the course of human events it becomes necessary for one people to dissolve the political bands which have connected them with another, and to assume among the powers of the earth a separate and equal station to which the laws of nature and of nature's God entitle them, a decent respect to the opinions of mankind require that they should declare the causes which impel them to the separation. We hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men are created equal, that they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights, that among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness; that to secure these rights governments are instituted among men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the government; that whenever any form of government becomes destructive of these ends, it is the right of the people to alter or to abolish it, and to institute new government, laying its foundation on such principles and organizing its powers in such form, as to them shall seem most likely to affect their safety and happiness. Prudence indeed will dictate that governments long established should not be changed for light and transient causes; and accordingly, all experience hath shown, that mankind are more disposed to suffer, while evils are sufferable, than to right themselves by abolishing the forms to which they are accustomed. But when a long train of abuses and usurpations, pursuing invariably the same object, evinces the design to reduce them under absolute despotism, it is their right, it is their duty, to throw off such government and to provide new guards for their future security. Such has been the patient sufferances of these colonies, and such is now the necessity which constrains them to alter their former systems of government. The history of the present king of Great Britain is a history of repeated injuries and usurpations, all having in direct object the establishment of an absolute tyranny over these states. To prove this, let facts be submitted to a candid world. He has refused his assent to laws the most wholesome and necessary for the public good. He has forbidden his governors to pass laws of immediate and pressing importance, unless suspended in their operation till his assent should be obtained; and when so suspended, he is utterly neglected to attend to them. He has refused to pass other laws for the accommodation of large districts of people, unless those people would relinquish the right of representation in the legislature, a right inestimable to them and formidable to tyranny, to tyrants only. He has called together legislative bodies at places unusual, uncomfortable, and distant from the depository of their public records, for the sole purpose of fatiguing them into compliance with his measures. He has dissolved representative houses repeatedly, for opposing with manly firmness his invasion on the rights of the people. He has refused for a long time after such dissolutions to cause others to be elected, whereby the legislative powers, incapable of annihilation, have returned to the people at large for their exercise, the state remaining in the meantime exposed to all the dangers of invasion from without and the convulsions within. He has endeavored to prevent the population of these states, for that purpose obstructing the laws of naturalization of foreigners, refusing to pass others to encourage their migrations thither, and raising the conditions of new appropriation of land. He has obstructed the administration of justice by refusing his assent to laws for establishing judiciary powers. He has made judges dependent on his will alone for the tenure of their offices and amount and payment of their salaries. He has erected a multitude of new offices. He has erected a multitude of new offices and sent hither swarms of officers to harass our people and eat out their substance. He has kept among us in times of peace standing armies without the consent of our legislatures. He is affected to render the military independent of and superior to the civil power. He has combined with others to subject us to a jurisdiction foreign to our constitution and unacknowledged by our laws, giving his assent to their acts of pretended legislation. For quartering large bodies of armed troops among us, for protecting them by mob trial from punishment for any murders which they should commit on the inhabitants of these states, for cutting off our trade with all parts of the world, for imposing taxes on us without our consent, for depriving us in many cases of the benefits of trial by jury, for transporting us beyond the seas to be tried for pretended offenses, for abolishing the free system of English laws in a neighboring province, establishing thereby an arbitrary government and enlarging its boundaries so as to render it at once an example and fit instrument for introducing the same absolute rule into these colonies, for taking away our charters, abolishing our most valuable laws, and altering fundamentally the forms of our government, for suspending our own legislatures and declaring themselves invested with power to legislate for us in all cases whatsoever. He has abdicated government here by declaring us out of his protection and waging war against us. He has plundered our seas, ravaged our coasts, burnt our towns, and destroyed the lives of our people. He is at this time transporting large armies of foreign mercenaries to complete the works of death, desolation, and tyranny already begun with circumstances of cruelty and perfidy scarcely in parallel in the most barbarous ages and totally unworthy of the head of a civilized nation. He has constrained our fellow citizens taken captive on the high seas to bear arms against their country, to become the executioners of their friends and brethren, and to fall themselves by their hands. Or to fall themselves by their hands. He has excited domestic insurrections among us and has endeavored to bring on the inhabitants of our frontiers the merciless Indian savages whose known rule of warfare is an undistinguished destruction of all ages, sexes, and conditions. In every stage of these oppressions, we have petitioned for redress in the most humble terms. Our repeated petitions have been answered only by repeated injury. A prince whose character is thus marked by every act which may define a tyrant is unfit to be the ruler of a free people. Nor have we been wanting in attentions to our British brethren. We have warned them from time to time of attempts by their legislature to extend an unwarrantable jurisdiction over us. We have reminded them of the circumstances of our emigration and settlement here. We have appealed to their native justice and magnanimity, and we have conjured them by the ties of our common kindred to disavow these usurpations, which would inevitably interrupt our connections and correspondence. They too have been deaf to the voice of justice and constant unity. We must therefore acquiesce in the necessity which denounces our separation and hold them, as we hold the rest of mankind, enemies in war, in peace, friends. We therefore, the representatives of the United States of America, in general Congress assemble, appealing to the supreme judge of the world for the rectitude of our intentions, do in the name and by the authority of the good people of these colonies solemnly publish and declare that these united colonies are and upright ought to be free and independent states, that they are absolved from all allegiance to the British Crown, and that all political connection between them and the state of Great Britain is and ought to be totally dissolved. And that as free and independent states, they have full power to levy war, conclude peace, contract alliances, establish commerce, and do all other things, do all other acts and things which independent states may have right do. And with the support of this declaration, with a firm reliance on the protection of divine providence, we mutually pledge to each other our lives, our fortunes, and our sacred honor. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other unfinished business? Moving forward to legislation.
Orders number 15, 2021, amended Title IV subdivision regulations of the codified ordinances of the city of Shelby.
You can start reading.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Roberts and a second by Mr. McGlocklin for the second reading of orders number 15, 2021. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rob.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yay.
Orders number 15, 2021 passes as second reading.
Orders number 16, 2021, amending chapter 1,044 sewer charges, section 1,044.02, conditions of service rate schedule, production cost adjuster of the codified ordinances of the city of Shelby, Ohio.
Move second reading.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. McGlocklin for the second reading of orders number 16, 2021. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rob.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yay.
Orders number 16, 2021 passes as second reading.
Orders number 17, 2021, amending orders number eight, 2021, annual appropriations and declaring an emergency.
Move the rule requiring that orders be read on three separate occasions be suspended?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Gates that the rule requiring that orders be read on three separate occasions be suspended. Discussion? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, there's a reference to a supplemental appropriation for the fire damage fund of $45,000 under the line item miscellaneous. I wonder if we'd be informed what the...
Will that have a bearing on your vote on suspending?
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor. My apologies.
No problem.
I jumped again.
No problem. Is there any more discussion on motion to suspend? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rob.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yay.
Motion to suspend passes. Will the orders be taken and passed?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Gates for the passage of orders number 17, 2021. Discussion? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I have a question about the transfer for the fire damage fund.
You still do?
Yeah, I still do.
Mr. Crum.
So, this is a fund where essentially, you know, there are several funds where we sort of act as an intermediary, where especially with housing, where folks need repairs or whatnot. The funds come into us, the funds go back out. This fund results in essentially if there's fire damage to a house that, not sure, or whatnot, they are eligible for federal funds or state funds that comes into us, goes through the same program. It's very rarely used. It hasn't been used at all since I've been here. But in this case, I guess there was a structure fire that had some damage of a few months ago from my understandings. And so I spoke with Amber, well, Amber spoke with Stacy from the department. And they expect that it probably costs $45,000. So, I just wanted to increase that line item as well, or increase the revenue item with the county to prepare for that.
Mr. Gates.
Mayor, is this the property on Bridge Street?
I believe so.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rob.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yay.
Orders number 17, 2021 passes.
Orders number 18, 2021, establishing a temporary sewer sewer charge for the sewer fund.
Will the orders be taken and passed for first reading?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts for the first reading of orders number 18, 2021. Discussion? Mr. Gates.
More comment than discussion. You know, I see, for example, residential is, you know, will be an additional $1.99, and everything ends in something nine. It just seems to me, this is a marketing thing that people do. You know, when you go to the gas station and you see the gas is $2.94, there's that $2.949, so you're really paying, you buy a gallon of gas, you're going to pay $2.95. And it's the same thing with new cars. You know, it's whatever, you know, they never round it up to the nearest thousand. I'm not going to make an amendment to change these, but this, you know, that's... I don't want to say it's annoying, but I see through this. So, I would hope that if we do something like Sid, just make it the full dollar or make it $2.50 or something like that. But I do have a unanimous consent request in the second whereas paragraph to change the word enterprising to enterprise so that reads the municipal sewer division is an enterprise fund. It may be enterprising as well, but I think enterprise is probably so. I ask unanimous consent for that change.
All right. By unanimous consent, is that we would change the word enterprising to enterprise in the second whereas? Are there any objections? Are we moving that change, are we still made? Any further discussion? Mr. Gates.
And I note that in the word ordinance at the beginning of the, at the very top, the word ordinance is misspelled.
Yes, in the header?
Yes.
Okay, then we will correct that as well. Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rob.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yay.
Orders number 18, 2021 passes.
Resolution number 30, 2021, authorizing the mayor as director of public service to acquire rights of easement for electric lines in the Wolf Run subdivision.
Point of order, Mayor. This piece of legislation appeared at the last council meeting. It was read by title. There was not a motion to pass it. Obviously, there was not a second. I could argue quite well that this piece of legislation was by default defeated at the last meeting and would argue too that it is in error on our agenda here. On the other hand, knowing that it could simply be reintroduced with another title, the actual language itself unchanged, and I have no problem with the substance of it, but, you know, for future reference, if there's a piece of legislation that council takes no action on, that piece of legislation by default has been defeated. So, I withdraw my point of order.
Thank you.
And would move that the resolution be taken and passed. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts for the passage of resolution 30, 2021. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rob.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yay.
Resolution number 30, 2021 passes.
Resolution number 33, 2021, adopting an annual revenue budget for the year 2022.
Will the resolution be taken and passed? Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts for the passage of resolution number 33, 2021. Discussion? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, council is required to pass two significant financial pieces of legislation every year. The one that we think about most often is the annual appropriations ordinance. But we are required also by law to adopt a revenue budget mid-year for the next year, and that's the document that is before us. The appropriations ordinance focuses on expenditures. This document focuses on revenue, and it requires the finance director who prepares this to peer into his crystal ball 18 months out. It's an important document because it's required by law, but it's not something that we need to spend a lot of time on like we do the appropriations ordinance. What happens is this gets sent over to the county budget commission, and they then send it back to us primarily looking at the real estate taxes that we would be collecting in the year 2022. So, that's what we have before us. I should note that the legislature changed the law a few years ago. I understand school districts don't even have to do this anymore. Municipalities and other governmental agencies have to do it, so that's where we're at.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rob.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yay.
Resolution number 33, 2021 passes.
Resolution number 34, 2021, authorizing the mayor as director of public service to enter into an agreement with Mosher Industrial Service Corp. to remove retired and obsolete equipment from the municipal light plant buildings.
Will the resolution be taken and passed?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. McGlocklin for the passage of resolution 34, 2021. Discussion? Mr. Gates.
Just looking at my own crystal ball, with the boilers being removed in the back part of the light plant building, then we can look at sometime about taking down that back part of the light plant. Take down the essence, the boiler house, leaving the turbine room intact.
That case been already read up for some time? Yes, sir. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rob.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yay.
Resolution number 34, 2021 passes.
Resolution number 35, 2021, authorizing the mayor as director of public service to enter into an agreement with Southside Excavating to remove lime sludge from the water treatment plant sludge drawing rooms and declaring an emergency.
Will the resolution be taken and passed?
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. McGlocklin for the passage of resolution 35, 2021. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rob.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yay.
Resolution number 35, 2021 passes. Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I move that council suspend the rule requiring the proposed legislation be supplied to each member of council at least three days prior to the regular, to a regular council meeting and in order to consider resolutions number 36, 37, and 38-2021.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Martin to suspend the rules of council as so described in order to consider resolution 36, 37, and 38. Discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rob.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yay.
That motion to suspend passes.
Resolution number 36, 2021, consenting to the annexation of a certain parcel of land known as the Shuler Moore Annexation in Jackson Township, Richland County, Ohio, to the city of Shelby and declaring an emergency.
Will the resolution be taken and passed? Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Roberts for the passage of resolution 36, 2021. Discussion? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, if the petitioners, one of the petitioners is here, he wishes to address the council, this would be the time.
Would you like to address the council on your annexation?
I actually have no idea why I'm here. We, at least at this meeting, this... We, at least at this meeting, this process has been quite a process. But we have been trying to annex in, we have the idea of annexing in. We have a very limited water spot at our house. We are the first property outside of town, right next to Dave Keine, where he lives. And our neighbor Diane Moore has no water either. And so we were seeking to do that so that we could obtain water from the city. And we originally were talking about sewer improvements also, but I thought that sewer line ends way before it gets to our house. So that wasn't going to be possible. So we'd have to keep our present second plan. But, so we could go through this process, which has been quite a, quite a ordeal. Joe's been helping a bunch, but it's kind of something, just, the first thing Joe told me was to hire a lawyer. And it took three months for us to find a lawyer that would even do this. Was not able to find anybody locally that would do that. And we've just been kind of learning as we went here. We've had surveys and engineering done and gone back and forth numerous times with various officials. And like I said, we finally have reached this point where the, our lawyer Andrew Medwick from, he's the law director of Ontario, has taken care of us, and he filed our petition with the Richland County Commissioners and at the same time had to mail documentation to all the property owners that touched our property and the clerk courts, right, and the township, by the way.
Clerk of council.
Council, okay, clerk of council. And like I said, it took sixteen days to get there, so I appreciate your help doing that. But honestly, I have no idea exactly what function, what happens now. I have not talked to anybody that can explain the exact process that happens now. I know our Platts are over at, our Platts run the surveys. Two different surveys are there. They're over at Richland County Commissioners. And I honestly thought we had to wait sixty days. I did not know this was going to happen. So, and I don't know what happens after you vote there. But, but we do have both Diane, who lives next to me, and our family definitely have a great desire to come in the city if that can be done. We, like I said, it's, we figure it'd be a year-long process, and we're willing to go through that. And I guarantee you, if we were not very, very interested in doing this, we would, we would have given up a long time ago. Because this started in January. When I did surveys, there was six inches snow on the ground. So, and we have a long ways to go. So we appealed you for, you know, we, I understand, and the delay of the land there, there's our property and then Diane Moore's property, and then there's another property. And it would be probably beneficial for the city to take in all three of those properties. But I cannot even tell you that lady's name that lives on the third property out of town. But she is very built, and I've talked to the family, and she is just, I mean, they are absolutely not interested in that, at least at this point. I don't know if at some point in time somebody wants to do that. Because I know, I do know it's the field outside town, so obviously that would, I knew that would make a clean slate for you guys. But, but they were definitely not interested in doing that now, so. But Diane definitely is. She's well up in years, and she has lived without water forever, and she's chomped up a bit to turn her spigot on and actually get some water without having to go buy it someplace. So, and so are we. You know, the water truck coming to the house is kind of, it's not a good thing, so. Plus, I don't know if we have a, I know we have fire service at our house, and I don't know. We've never really had an emergency that required police. I don't know if police would come to our house or not. If we lived outside the city, would you guys respond if a burglar was breaking in the house? I don't know. Okay, I'm on this one. All right, so.
Well, thank you. That's all.
But that's all. I don't know what you wanted to say, but.
That's perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mayor, one of the documents that Mr. Gates made available to us emailed, it's a five-page document. Ohio Revised Code is from the Ohio Legislative Service Commission, special annexation procedure. And what happens is there's some dates nowhere near the sixty days. The petition was filed on June second with the county commissioners. And we are required to pass three pieces of legislation within twenty days. This is the twenty-first. That twenty days is tomorrow. So that's why, why we've got these things, suspending our rule and doing what we can to expedite this property, or this process rather. Mr. Gates had said, I believe he talked with the petitioner's attorney, and these are, these are drop dead dates. There is no order. It says it must be done by twenty days, must be filed with the, with the county commissioners. So I know what the clerk of council has on his docket, assuming council passes them, and assuming you sign them, Mayor. I know what he'll be doing very early in the morning is getting these to the, to the county commissioner. Just as an aside, my suggestion is to take two copies with him and bring home one that is date stamped by the clerk over there so that you've got documentation that indeed it was filed in time. So, but that's why we're here. We've got, you know, a deadline literally breathing down our necks of tomorrow. And so we're here to the extent that council can to grease the petitioner's skills.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Rob.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yay.
Resolution number thirty-six, two thousand twenty-one passes.
Resolution number thirty-seven, two thousand twenty-one. Authorizing the extension of city services to an area of Jackson Township, Richland County, Ohio, posed to be annexed to the city of Shelby and declaring an emergency.
Move the resolution be taken up and passed.
Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Martin and a second by Mr. Roberts for the passage of Resolution number thirty-seven, two thousand twenty-one. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rob.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yay.
Resolution number thirty-seven, two thousand twenty-one passes.
Resolution number thirty-eight, two thousand twenty-one. Requiring the establishment of a buffer between the Schuler Moore Annexation and the adjacent Jackson Township property in the event of incompatibility and declaring an emergency.
Move the resolution be taken up and passed. Second.
We have a motion by Mr. Gates and a second by Mr. Rob for the passage of Resolution number thirty-eight, two thousand twenty-one. Discussion. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rob.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yay.
Resolution number thirty-eight, two thousand twenty-one passes. Miscellaneous business, any miscellaneous business to be brought before council this evening? Mr. Gates.
Mayor, I noted with sadness that the death of Betty Donenworth happened last week. She was retired as a dispatcher in the police department. And more especially, she was the first dispatcher in the Shelby Police Department. When I held your seat and needed to either call or go over to the police department because she worked the day shift, she was the person I always spoke to first, the person I always saw first. And she was a credit not only to the police department, but also to all city employees and all city departments. She served, she served the public well. I'm going to stop right there. I don't know if we have, we have a police chief here who may write a wonderful tribute. We have a former chief here, so, you know, they can speak much more eloquently and wisely about Betty than I can.
Any additions?
Well, there's not a whole lot you can say about Betty that people don't already know, don't already realize. I spent the majority of my career working with or working against Betty. It all depended on what her attitude was during the day. She was always one that kept her opinions close to herself. If anybody knew her, they would know that's not a true statement. But she was, she was actually a joy to work with most times. And I had opportunity to speak with her, the sadity prior to her death. And I was quite shocked when I heard about it, when Chief Combs informed me of it. She will be missed for sure. She was a, she was a figure in the department for a long time.
I'll add a little bit to that if you don't mind. I had to joke a little bit at the funeral. We had, there were three police chiefs, three former police chiefs, that all worked with Betty that were there. Carl Rivers appointed Betty to that position of dispatch, but she actually worked for Chief Rivers, Chief Van Wagner, and Chief Bennett. And I kind of joked that there were, she worked for three chiefs, but there were five chiefs that worked for her. So we spent more time working for Betty, I think, than Betty did working for us. And I just also had, I graduated high school with our youngest son. So when I came here, I was chastised quite a bit by Betty. And I joked at the funeral, I played a lot of jokes on Betty and teased her a lot, none of which I could repeat at either the funeral or city council. But Betty was an icon. I talked about it in my post. I would always laugh because she would leave work on Central Avenue, put her purse over her right shoulder, and then march up and down Main Street shopping. So she loved to shop. And also, there was a time when Betty's mother passed that the funeral home was broken into by a local burglar, and her mother's jewelry was stolen. And so we took that kind personally, and we were able to arrest the individual and recover the jewelry, at least most of the jewelry. And he ended up going to prison. But had a good conversation with the family graveside. And also that Steve Dorsey, who was retired from the Shelby Police Department, now chief of Greenwich, also showed up, attended the funeral, and also stood at the casket during the calling hours. So we appreciate all the support. There were a lot of people there. Most of them in law enforcement, so you know when somebody has the respect of at least the three living chiefs to attend the funeral instead of the funeral services, she was a pretty, she was a pretty special lady.
Thank you. Mr. Gates.
Mayor, the council adjourned.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. Gates for adjournment, and Mr. Martin, second. Roll call, please.
Mr. Rob.
Yay.
Mr. Roberts.
Yay.
Mr. Gates.
Yay.
Mr. Martin.
Yay.
Mr. McGlocklin.
Yay.
Also, is adjourned at eight oh three. I can tell him?